Going to call this meeting to order. So I am now going to ask for a motion from council that the public hearing for bylaw eighteen ninety-five and bylaw eighteen ninety-six be opened at ten fifteen a.m. Thank you, council votes, all those in favor, and that motion is carried unanimously. So I have a number of announcements that I need to make before we begin the meeting. Any of the presentations that are made today will be available on the Neill County website, and any of the letters which were numerous are also available on that website. Because of the size and the volume of the letters, we have not provided them to you in your package, but they are available to you on the Neill County website. So here's the number of things I need to talk to you about. First, I'd like to remind the public that if they wish to speak to the bylaw, they should register their names on the speakers list. There will also be opportunity, when I have gone through that speakers list, for you to make a presentation. I will ask one final time if anyone else wishes to speak. At this point, I would like to have the members of council today introduce themselves, and I'm going to start at my left with Councilor Christie. So Councilor Christie, if you would, please. Technology.
Your name is Christie from Division Six. So they gave me a mic that works. I'm from Division Six on the northwest corner of the county.
Good morning, Lordy, Michelle Kinekam, Division Five, so areas of the north, southeast, and west of Three Hills, and thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your engagement.
Morning, everyone. Jerry Whitstock, I'm Division Three, that encompasses the Ackley-Linden area, very southwest corner of the county.
And good morning, I'm Ken King, I service the Reeve, and I also represent Division Seven, which is basically Highway twenty-seven east side of Neill County up to County Red here.
Carrie Vogts, Division Four, I am Torrington, Sunny Slope, and towards Three Hills.
Good morning, welcome, everyone. I'm Jane McGee, Division One, which is the west-south corner and goes all the way to the Highway nine kind of area.
Good morning, Debbie Tanner. Thanks, everybody, for taking time out of your busy day and being here today. I am Division Two, Councilor.
Okay, thank you. In the room also, we have our senior leadership team and members of our planning team, and I think rather for the sake of time, I will forego allowing them to give you their life story. But we have our CAO, Mr. Mike Hogan, we have our director, Kevin Gannon, Mike Zier, and Theresa, who does also on the senior leadership team. And of course, the lady we're going to hear from a fair amount today, Ms. Hazelton, and I also thank Carolyn Van der Goel for keeping us in order. Thank you. So today's public hearing procedures will be followed according to procedural bylaw eighteen sixty-four. A copy of the procedures are attached to the public hearing package, and since this is a larger gathering than usual, we will review a few general guidelines for today's hearing. Today's proceedings will be recorded and made available on our website afterwards. Because we're not in council chambers, this is not being streamed, but it will be available on the website. Paper copies of the public hearing report are available. In the case that we run out, you can obtain copies of the document by downloading them off our website, or you can pick up a paper copy at the Neill County Administration Office after the meeting. As I said earlier, due to the significant number of letters submitted, I think I reviewed somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty-plus north, though they're not included as paper copies today from the public hearing. However, you can download all the letters from our website, go to, of course, www.nehillcounty.com, navigate to News and Announcements section, find the public hearing bylaw eighteen ninety-five and eighteen ninety-six, and look under More Information. There are two microphones at the front. Speakers will be called in the order that they appear on the speaker list. I will call the first person to microphone number one and the second person to microphone number two. Speaker number two will proceed after speaker number one has finished, and I have announced the next speaker to come forward. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name, your address, where you live in relationship to the proposal, and whether you have previously submitted a written response. If you have already submitted a written submission, please only come up to speak if you have additional points to add to that submission. Council has been provided with the written submissions beforehand, and we have had an opportunity to review them. Each speaker will have five minutes. A timer at the front will display a green light, which will turn yellow when there are thirty seconds remaining and red when your time is up. The microphone will be turned off when your time has expired. Group presentations are limited to a maximum of ten minutes. The timer will change from green to yellow when there's thirty seconds remaining and red when the time is up. The microphone will also be turned off at that time. Once it seems all presenters have spoken, I will confirm if anyone else wishes to speak. We will now begin the actual public hearing process, and I will now ask our planning and development department to come forward to make their presentation. So Ms. Hazelton, whenever you are ready, please.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I am going to sit, so I'm sorry if you can't see me at the back. Hopefully you can hear me. Please raise a hand if you can't hear me right now. I think it's probably fairly loud, and as I go through the presentation, hopefully that doesn't change here. I thought it might be helpful if I just share a little bit about the public hearing process itself. Public hearings are required when there has been an application to have property rezoned from one land use classification to another. Everyone has the right to this process. If a redesignation is successful, it does change the uses available for these lands to the new district uses. So when we receive an application, that's the first step that comes in the door. As administration, we're required to draft a bylaw. A lot of this process is legislated in the Municipal Government Act, and so this is the process we use for anyone that wants to rezone property. We draft a bylaw, and we take that bylaw to council for first reading and to set the public hearing. This is what actually gets that application into the queue and allows us to send it out the door for that public comment. The next thing we do is we do notify adjacent landowners within one mile of the proposed development. As per our advertising bylaw, our number-one way that we notify our residences through the Capitol and through the website, we do the letters to adjacent landowners as a courtesy, but our bylaw that council has done several years ago is that's their key mechanism to notify residences through the Capitol and the website. The public hearing does provide an opportunity to address council before a decision is made. And just so for information, the default zoning in Neill County's agricultural district, unless you live in a hamlet, or lands have been intentionally designated for a specific The next thing we do is the purpose for the public hearing is for council to receive information. All the information needs to be heard by everyone at the public hearing. Council can ask questions following any presentation. It is a formal process, as I said again, as outlined in the Municipal Government Act and in our procedural bylaw. A public hearing must be held prior to second reading of that bylaw. A bylaw does require three readings to pass. Council has the opportunity to approve the bylaw, they can amend the bylaw, or they can deny the bylaw. Affected parties have the right to be heard, and the chairperson can limit if it's not relevant or if it's very repetitive. When it comes to direct control districts, I thought I would share a little bit about this as well. The other option that we had in front of us was an industrial district for a commercial waste management facility. However, in order to limit the uses that could be applied to these lands, it was a recommendation by administration that the lands would fall under direct control district. So we do utilize them, the direct control district, when we want to limit the uses, so not all of the industrial uses for the industrial districts could be applied to those lands. Or the other time we use it is if somebody has something that's very unique, or it has multiple uses, it doesn't really fit in any land use district. So we use it both times. Approval of any development permits in a direct control district are done by council as per our land use bylaw. Subdivision applications go to council, and then they make a recommendation to the Municipal Planning Commission, who will be the decision-makers on the subdivision. So the process is a little bit different for a direct control district versus otherwise. So as for our requirements, we did have the notification in the Capitol for three weeks. We're only obligated to do it for two, but typically we exceed those. Notices were sent to adjacent landowners and referral agencies, and it did what's posted on our website as per March twenty-eighth. The purpose of this application is to consider the redesignation of a portion of Section two, twenty-nine, twenty-four, west of four, for a Class Two Integrated Waste Management Facility. The proposed redesignation is from agricultural district and local rural commercial district to direct control district seven, so there's already another rezoning on one of the lands, and from agricultural district to direct control district eight. This is the very first step. If successful, specific details of the project will be dealt with through other approval agencies and the development permit process. The summary of the project, so the total proposed integrated waste Class Two Management Facility site is five hundred and thirty-six acres. This is a privately operated, non-hazardous landfill facility that specializes in the collection, transportation, processing, recycling, treatment, and disposal of various types of waste generated by businesses, industry, commercial, institutional, agricultural, and there are some opportunities for local residential communities. If successful in the redesignation, lands will be consolidated from ten titles, which are what's existing today, to four titles, which will be one title for Waste Connection lands, and three titles that will be private landowners. Additional processes, again, if they're successful today, would be the closure of an old forest road, which would no longer be necessary, and a subdivision of another quarter in order to allow for a land swap. The D.C. seven district covers the portion of the site dedicated to the uses required to operate a landfill, including the critical infrastructure. You've been given full copies of both of those bylaws in your package, and there will be, there's definitions in there as well, so if you're looking for a definition for something in here, you can certainly refer to your package. The D.C. eight district covers the remainder of the site. This district may include some of the critical infrastructure, as well as the potential for some recycling and construction materials waste management. So the summary of the location again, it is north of Township Road twenty-nine zero and east of Range Road twenty-four two. And what you see in the image on the right-hand side is the proposed, how the titles would look if they are successful through this process, that there would be four titles versus what's existing today as ten. We've also wanted to include the environmentally significant areas, soil, and the contour amount, and so what you will see here is in a portion of the southeast corner, or quarter of two, you have a ESA Neill Creek Level Four. The rankings on these environmentally sensitive areas are one to four, four being the least protected, one being the most protected. They are based on, there's about twelve criteria that were used when the study was done, and typically when we are in that Level Four, there's one or two criteria that may be what's created that as a flight area for that criterion. And then again, as you can see on the other side, we have soils and land suitability rankings are what's showing on that side. We also have historical resources later, and this is a provincial data set. Most types of development activities are required to obtain formal approval under the Historical Resources Act prior to the outset of activities, and they would be no different here. This requirement applies to projects located on private leon, regardless of where they're situated in the province. And again, this is done through our arts, culture, and the status of women, is the ministry that oversees this. In this case, the historical flagging on these sites are for archaeological and potential paleontological reasons. Again, the ranks on the Historical Resources Act is one to five. One is there has been something found. Five is there's a likely that something could be found, and so they would have to go through the approval process of the provincial government on the Historical Resources side as well. And the image to the right, and most of this information you will find in your package also, there are a couple different proposed accesses that they are looking at. At this point in time, this would be something that we would deal with if they're successful through the development permit stage, but the twenty-nine zero is the Township Road that they would be accessing the site from, and then there is a potential to either go through up Range Road twenty-four two, or they could potentially go through the southwest corner and access the site that way, and at this point, it hasn't been determined. As with any application, administration will highlight the pillars and the policies in each plan that align with the application. Each pillar has value. The pillars of the strategic plan and the municipal development plan are not subordinate to each other and are not in order of priority. It is council's job to evaluate each application on a case-by-case basis, and they must determine the appropriate balance in order to make decisions for the long-term future of Neill County. So I will highlight, as we go through to these plans, so the first one I want to talk about is council's strategic plan. This is a plan that council drafts after they're elected, and the pillar in this plan that we're going to talk about is high-quality infrastructure, and the goal is to build and maintain infrastructure that meets the ongoing needs of the county's residents and businesses. And underlying that are sustainably managed existing infrastructure, maintain a high-quality road network, ensure the county is prepared for future waste management needs, and understand current and future rural water requirements. So those are some of the major pillars that land underneath that, underneath that pillar. When we get to the municipal development plan, under the economic pillar in that, Neill County recognizes the importance of a balanced tax base and strives to create opportunities for commercial, agricultural, industrial, and tourism growth. Underneath the economic piece, the goals and policies are to attain the necessary infrastructure, to retain, expand, and attract business and industry, to create opportunities that will provide a variety of development options that will diversify and strengthen the county's economy. Isolated commercial or industrial development may be considered on the individual merits of the application, and through the land use bylaw, the county shall ensure that negative impacts are mitigated through adequate buffers for transitional land between industrial and non-industrial uses. Again, under the core services pillar, Neill County has developed a plan which will include both a hierarchy of roads and the standards of construction for each level. It is the intent of this plan to protect transportation corridors, propose appropriate development, and access management for these corridors. Underneath this, the goals and policies, land uses and developments that are likely to have a significant impact on the road system should be located in your roads that are capable of accommodating such use. Proposed new developments on existing roads, which may not be the appropriate standard for the density of traffic to be incurred, may be required to upgrade the road to a higher standard as per county policy, so in that case, the developer is. Again, we've included in here a draft, and you guys have that as well in your package, the proposed D.C. seven and the proposed D.C. eight, and where those boundary lines would be for either. This was also in the package of information that you have, and so this is a typical site that Race Connections does. This is how they actually do landfills, and it is what they call progressive landfill development, where it is about a twenty-acre piece at a time that gets utilized, and so you will see again all of this information in your package. I wanted to include some site photos for you. So the first one we have here is a view from Range Road twenty-four two, which is looking north towards the site, and then the existing yard site that will become part of the Waste Connection property if they are successful. And then we've got some of the intersection of Highway twenty-one north, and this is Highway twenty-one and twenty-nine zero, both north and south, to give you an idea of what that looks like. And then we've got twenty-nine zero, and approximately between southwest of one and southeast of two is that first image, and then we've got the Cooley that is in the southeast of two, the second image. Twenty-nine zero north, between the southeast of two and the southwest of two, and there is an old road diversion. It may be harder to see here, but this is the old road diversion that used to be there years ago. Again, we've got the intersection of twenty-nine zero and twenty-four two, both ways, so that you can have an idea of what that looks like if you haven't been by. And then looking north on twenty-four two, and this image is taken just following the acreage here. And then you've got the Cooley, which is right here, so this is where that image was taken from the roadway there. And then what you're going to see going forward is we did drive into the site, so you will see a number of images, so we did drive along here and down and took some images, so we've included some of those in our presentation this morning, so you will be able to see the lands in question. So again, this is portions of that northwest of two, as we got into that area, to give you an overview of what those lands look like. And again, this presentation will be made available for you if you're interested after the fact. Again, still looking the lands and looking in every direction these images have been And then this is the last slide of images, and then where you're seeing the road there, we actually left the site and then took a picture north on twenty-four two, so you can see what that road looks like further north of the site. I wanted to go through a little bit of the steps in the process. So typically, a developer will do site selection, they will look and see whether or not they have landlord or participation, and they will do preliminary technical studies. Sometimes they will bring that to us and ask questions, sometimes they won't. Often, the questions in the early stages are our process and what they would need to do on our end. Then their first step in the case of this application was redesignation, because they're looking at changing the use of the lands outside of that agricultural district, so redesignation application is required, and with that, public consultation and this public hearing. If they are successful in the redesignation, they move on to step three, and that step would be a disclosure plan to Alberta Environment and Protected Areas. They would apply for a Class Two landfill to Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, and then they also have water act application, so that would be the next step following this. Further on to that, they would apply for a subdivision application through the county, and that would be to realign and consolidate lands. There would be a road closure application for the old forest road to access, there's forty-acre parcels in there, and there was a forced road put in in order to provide access to those parcels. So once those parcels were consolidated, that road is no longer necessary, so they could apply and close that road. That is a provincial process as well. It does come through the municipality. We do have to hold a public hearing again to close a road, but ultimately, it's a promise that signs off whenever we do road closures. Once they have provincial approvals are in place, again, based on success, they move on to step five, which would be the development permit application, the development agreement, there would be a road upgrade required. As we mentioned, twenty-nine zero is the Township Road they're looking at. From a municipal perspective, they would be required to pave that road, and we would have to work with them to make sure that it meets the appropriate standard, and with that would be a road use agreement, where that would be the designated haul route. And then moving on from there, again, once, if they're successful with all of those pieces that they would be getting, construction of the initial cell and required infrastructure, there would be continuous monitoring reports that get submitted to Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, and then approvals under this legislation is set for a maximum of ten years, and then they have to go through the review at all. Currently, and I just wanted, again, typically, we've given you all a list of names of the letters that we received, so currently, we've received three hundred and seventy-seven letters in opposition prior to the deadline. If we got them after the deadline, your name is not on the list, and your letter did not make the package, but this list of names has been included as part of your package, so you can see who submitted. And then we did have some agency responses that, again, we always notify different agencies whenever we're applying, and these are the ones that have responded to us to make. And then I just put some general notes of some of the noted concerns. This is not everything. Council will have got the package ahead of time, and they have an opportunity to read through all the letters. But the reoccurring things were the concerns that have been noted here, which was the water quality, environmental, pest protection of agglan, quality of life, litter, odor, noise, traffic, decreased land values, not desired economic activity, and the health and safety. So those are some of the reoccurring things that we have through the letters. And that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Hazelton. I guess at this point, I would ask if council has any questions for the plan. Are there any questions from council to the bylaw? I am not seeing any, so at this point, I am going to ask the applicant to come forward and make their presentation. So if you would, come forward, please, and make your presentation. If you would, just please introduce yourselves and let the people know who you are, and then go forward with your presentation.
Good morning. I'm Jane McGee, and members of council, and members of the gallery. My name is Christie Under, I'm applying consultant, and with me today is Dan Rocha from Waste Connections of Canada. Waste Connections of Canada is a leading provider of comprehensive waste management services in Alberta and Canada. WCC is committed to undertaking safe and environmentally responsible operating practices. Mrs. Hazelton has detailed the direct control district and why we part of the stock district in the land use bylaw, and it's primarily due to the individually unique circumstances requiring site-specific controls here. Our intention with direct control is to provide council and county stakeholders a level of assurance and comfort that this land use is appropriate here and is subject to several checks and balances, both conventionally and municipally. We agree with administration that direct control was the appropriate instrument to use. So as you saw, there are two direct control districts in front of council today, and the difference is notable. The D.C. seven district purpose statement clearly reads that it is principally required to operate a Class Two landfill facility, so the Class Two landfill facility itself would be in the D.C. seven area. be in the DC seven area. The ancillary and supporting uses of the landfill however would be in the DC eight section. This includes maintenance shops, offices, scale house and some aspects that would be subject to local municipal approvals and controls. In terms of the current DC seven, Mrs. Hazelton did a good job of overseeing this for you. There is local rural commercial property and agricultural properties included. We go down from 10 to four titles by way of consolidation. The land use solely DC seven, DC eight would cover the Waste Connections site and the balance would remain in charge of it. There is a significant regulatory process that we need to follow. This will chart below lines the general process and the governing authorities that Waste Connections of Canada will work with throughout the approval and implementation process. The land use for designation in the two DC districts along with the accompanying master site development plan are the first step of the municipal and provincial approvals process. Ongoing state over in our public management would occur through this process as well as the approvals process. Additionally, there is a significant amount of work yet to be done in order to satisfy the regulatory approvals regime. All of these acts and pieces of legislation need to be satisfied with individual studies submitted to profits as part of the disclosure plan and the landfill approvals. All of this would be done post resort. The master site development plan and application that we submitted was in the first reading on March 26, 2024. This also allowed a public engagement process to commence. Our first public open house was April 15th with ongoing one-on-one meetings as requested from the public. We have also had what we heard report which is in front of council and has been posted on our website this morning. And I would like to now turn this over to Dan Rocha for project manager to continue the presentation.
Good morning, council and members of the public. I want to discuss a little bit what's being proposed. The master site development plan is developed in braces of the application providing a guidance and direction for the future operations. The MSDP outlines the typical components of the operations, describes the project approvals pathways, both locally and provincial. And the master site development plan works hand in hand with DC bottoms. That master site development plan isn't included in your package. But as a summary of what the project is, it's an entry to waste management facility. This does combine various waste management processes in an environmentally responsible manner and the full outline has been incorporated in the MSDP. Some aspects of the project, just to highlight, is the progressive development of a Class 2 landfill. A 20 acre cell is the initial cell that we would start with and there would be progressive development and capping as the project evolves, all subject to provincial approvals and ongoing oversight. Posting financial security and filing annual reports is important to know. Another aspect for us is we'd like to incorporate a public draft affair with opportunities to manage waste and recycling like the clean farms grain and twine program and other recycling opportunities to be explored with the community with ongoing consultation. Areas that are not incorporated for development will be maintained as ag lands with agreements in place with the local landlords to continue the farming. The proposed access to the site will be on Highway 21 and 29-0 and it does not pass any residences not associated with the project. The application proposes the upgrade to 29-0 to a brand, brand, and free standard with lower speed limits and upgrade to Highway 21 acceleration and deceleration lanes. From an overview perspective of the project, that is all I wanted to touch base on today. I think the balance of our presentation, we wanted to focus on a little bit what we heard during our process in the public hearing. We wanted to highlight some of the key public questions we heard, not only at the open house but with the one-on-one engagement. We acknowledge there's opposition and concerns in the local community. We are proud of our track record and are working relationships with and for operating sites. Change can make people uneasy and they're unsure who we are, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Based on the questions coming in largely directed towards the detailed investigation and effort required at the provincial level, it appears to us that the stakeholders and the county will be engaged in our 18 to 24 month Alberta environment process. We will be committed to engaging with all the stakeholders. Social media posts, I think this is one of those things where we're in a new age where a lot of the information gets circulated, it's just not accurate. So we wanted to clarify some of the great things we heard. It will not be a 500 acre landfill or as of yesterday, 800 acre landfill. The initial cell is 20 acres with progressive development capping throughout the life and our Alberta sites that we have, the two sites, one site is 102 and the other one is 130 over many, many years of development. 24 hours a day, we will not be operating 24 hours a day. Our operations intend to be Monday to Friday with receipt hours of waste from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM is the typical operating hours, half days Saturday, close Sundays and statutory holidays. We will not have litter blowing for 20 miles around. We have engineered controls on the site, operational efforts to ensure wind blown litters managed on our own property and in the event of unusual wind events, which can happen as we've seen last year in Carstairs, action plans are activated to address the matter as soon as possible. And all the land, all the ag lands being utilized, again, is another misinformation. We're only using a small portion of the land for our operations and the balance will be farmed as it is today and both DC seven and eight have agriculture as permitted use. Another item that came up is why here? Why are you looking at these lands? Well, an extensive search was undertaken and the following factors were key considerations during the site selection process, one of which is this county is actually not opposed to economic development and that's an important factor for us to understand. Things that are also not landfill technical requirements is the provincial highway network. Making sure we stay as close to it as possible. We actually currently have volume that drive on those roads today going through the county so utilizing of this site actually will lower the volumes that currently go throughout the county. Absence of the existing infrastructure, again, this is one of those key factors. We cannot site over a well, even a abandoned well, so making sure that we have a property that doesn't have that kind of infrastructure. The land requirement itself, we require sufficient area to facilitate the construction and operation and incorporate a buffer that we don't want to control. And the topography of the air is also important to know. I think on this particular land, we've got a 209 meter drop from one side to the other. This allows the natural configuration of the property to quite honestly have us hidden in plain sight. Other aspects of the why here is the screening relative to the standards of landfills. Now it's a little more on the technical side and making sure we understand. The access road, is it appropriate? The proposed road has minimal traffic on it and does not pass any residents, again, not associated with the project. The technical screening and studies and drilling did confirm that the provincial setting requirements could potentially be achieved. Area activities also an important factor when we're understanding the area businesses to see how they currently impact the area with traffic smell and other factors. Number and distance of residential neighbors are generally similar to other locations. As a reference, we put in our Coronation landfill here. Some Neohill residents actually have come up to our site and examined how we operate by visiting our existing locations and we are proud of our work that we do out there. Further opportunities for the public to learn and understand our operations will be made available. Again, to understand context, the highlighted yellows are lands that we own in Coronation. Nearby is a 10,000 head feedlot operation. Downstream from our site is a Coronation dam and campground and nearby, well, three miles is the town of Coronation. Other factor we heard was a lot of haul road in traffic. The transportation roads focus on a veil of private provincial highway networks with upgrading the lanes. We heard traffic will not stay on the haul road. You're going to shortcut through the county while we will be doing a dedicated road upgrade established and enforced by us and we would also welcome road resubgroup from Neohill County to use the dedicated road, which to understand, not all industry in Neohill County is required to do so. We also heard that using this town check road, there's a potential for wildlife strikes so our preference would be for reduced bid limit for our operations on the access road. We'd also be willing to work with the county and other wildlife protection mechanisms. Another item was about the coulee. The coulee is a key feature on the project line. Part of the coulee is the lowest level for municipal ESA. The coulee will be specifically evaluated as part of the future detailed studies needed to meet provincial requirements, including a focus on the stability, the surface water and wildlife. None of the landfill per footprint will be developed in the coulee as per the provincial landfill standards. Detailed tactical studies will be done. Grounding surface water, again, protection of local groundwater and surface water resources is key focus for provincial process under the Environmental Protection Enhancement Act and the Water Act. The groundwater, Alberta environment requires local groundwater to be protected through thick layer clay geology, the engineered containment, the layers, the removal of the leachate from within the footprint. In addition, groundwater monitoring requires twice a year testing in the spring and fall which also provides onsite warning in the unlikely event of groundwater being affected. Surface water, Alberta environment requires local surface water to be protected through controlled runoff, through the ditches of ponds. Release and runoff only at controlled rates to protect downstream areas and infrastructure and the release runoff must be approved and only controlled water quality to protect downstream users. Another factor we heard was about the wildlife and environmental protection. Every location and potentially any development actually has to go through wildlife and other environmental senses, sensitivities to consider. The provincial requirements will be, will include detailed assessment of the expected environmental effects and mitigations on these lands. So specific sensitivities that we heard about for the project would be the use of our falcons at the landfill to control nuisance and scavenger birds. There's also, we heard the possible spread of maybe a flu. We've heard the possible spread of air soil, soil worn diseases like clubber. Each of these potential issues will be addressed in detail as part of the provincial approvals process. Waste Connections will also work with the local residents living in the area, existing local agricultural and industrial operators on how they currently manage some of these sensitivities. We will also work with municipal and field personnel to understand the best management practices in regards to this. Property value protection, we heard this will devalue my property so we will implement a property value protection program to be worked out with the adjacent landowners. This assures landowners that if their property value has been negatively impacted by our project, that we will work with those affected landowners.
I just remind everybody to be respectful in the process and to allow the proponent to make their presentation, just like you will have opportunity to reply so please remain respectful.
The other aspect on what we heard is how we compensate by providing access to the lands and WCC will consider an impact response program which will offer compensation to owners directly impacted by our operations. This would trigger after the site is operating and account for the nuisance and impacts that directly affect the landowners. There are other mitigation factors that we do consider on our own property. We mitigate and manage these operational aspects through engineered controls, best practices on our own property hence the large site, acres owned versus the acres utilized. Factors like the dust, the litter, the odor, the birds, the noise, the light, the weeds, even our construction activities, all aspects of our operation that we manage on our site. It is fully intended to be that way. We also heard quite a bit about the waste source, the waste that would be coming to facility would be from our customers that would typically be flowing through our Rock Mune County transfer station and waste comes through a variety of places through the region. We do service the industrial, commercial and institutional businesses within the region and the CDA Calgary has their own landfills for their own residential waste and that's not intended for this facility. Services at the waste recycling transfer station are intended to be for Neohill County residents, only would include services that would be important to the community and as of note, Neohill County, the transfer stations in the communities within like Carbon, Acme and Lyndon, 3 Hills utilize the Drumheller landfill and that Drumheller landfill is located adjacent to the Red Deer River. We also heard, where does the money go? We talked a lot about a community enhancement fund and if the rezoning process is successful, we will provide financial support for the next two years with additional funds being provided through the operational of our facility. The mechanism to continued financial support during the operations provide royalty dollars on external volume to the site and negotiating with the county and interested stakeholders can create a program that will have benefits within the county for years to come. Community partnerships, we take great pride in development at the local community grassroots level and we will actively make contributions to the well-being of the communities we serve. As the project evolves, we would additionally seek partnerships with local conservation organizations and land trusts that could directly offset the amount of land utilized for the project. Waste facility synergies, this multi-million dollar project will generate economic development, support local industry and bring regional synergy. Drumheller District Solid Waste Management Association expressed a willingness to explore waste management synergies at the open house if rezoning occurs. This facility currently, again, takes the transfer station waste from Neohill County as well as the town of Carbon, Acme and Lyndon as well as others in the region. Town of 3 Hills councillors who attended the open house also expressed a willingness for synergies for the project. Neohill County Street Teach and Plan also talks a little bit about they want to explore the future with the county if rezoning occurs. Again, these three entities aren't supportive or of the application, it's mainly to say if it is rezoned, that a conversation can happen afterwards in order to discuss synergies. In conclusion, rezoning is only step one. Future Alberta environment regulatory process and county development permit process will allow for additional public consultation. Many months in direct communications are required to the refishing of the disclosure plan. Community benefits for the project are numerous. Waste management infrastructure drives investment and economic development opportunities. The area characteristics and population and industry are similar to our existing operations. There's opportunities for local employment and supporting local spending. Given the fact that the land use rezoning is only required and overview our operations with detailed studies to come later, we anticipated stakeholders would want more detailed answers and we're committed to further engagement as we go through the 18 to 24 month process with the stakeholders. Waste Connections of Canada is an experienced reputable company committed to safe environmental responsibility operating process. We're a good neighbor in the community, a local economic contributor. We want to show you how we can be a positive member in Neohill County but to do this, we need the land rezoned, which is why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate you staying within the timeframe. I am now going to ask council, I will remind the crowd that you need to be respectful and your opinions will be heard and so you need to respect the process, please. So I'm going to ask council if there are any questions that they have for the applicant at this time. Counselor Poves.
How would the facility minimize its ecological footprint and protect nearby natural habitats?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Poves. As I mentioned in our presentation, there is an opportunity. So as the project does evolve, we would additionally seek partnerships with local conservation organizations and land trusts that could directly offset the amount of land utilized for the facility. Does that, does that answer your question?
Okay, I'm going to again ask council if there are any further questions for the applicant. Counselor Poves.
So this is a big one, like the questions that I'm Like the questions that I'm asking are the questions that I read as a theme through all of the letters that we received. And what measures are in place to address communities' concerns and ensure transparency?
So the, the communities' concerns and transparency, I think is starting right now. I think we want to make sure we're showing we're on step one. The detailed work is extensive and there's a lot to do. And there's public consultation through the whole process. So we are absolutely willing to do that. We're fully prepared to be doing that through the whole process. And we want to make sure that we do show the public exactly how we would address a lot of the questions. We do see and hear a lot of the questions are related to the provincial aspects, the detailed information, how we're going to do, how we're going to provide protections. A lot of things are part of the process when we look at all of the things that we need to accomplish at the provincial level. And if you look at all the different aspects in the regulatory process, when it comes to the wildlife, the soils, the vegetation, aquatic ecology, the surface water, the hydrogeology, geological, all of these factors are items and aspects that we must do in the process. We cannot, we cannot cite or develop anything without satisfying all of these things as well as engaging the public as we do this process. So this is all part and parcel of our obligation, not only to the community, but it's to you, the county members, and to the province. So it is our obligation to meet all of these items.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions from council? Counselor Cunningham.
So are you able to explain to us a little bit more about the property value protection? If I'm understanding it correctly, it would be that maybe an independent assessor would assess a property. And then if they decided to sell 10 years down the road, if they weren't able to get that price for their property, you folks would compensate? Or am I totally ungraceful? I'm just wanting a little bit more about that property value protection piece.
Sure, yes. The property value protection, obviously, there's a market rate for what facility, lands as they are today. And our, certainly our goal is to make sure that that market assessment is protected for any landowners adjacent to us. So the mechanism that is united out is reflective of that process.
Any further questions? Counselor Fowles.
What types of, you talk about the ways that are coming in there, the institutional waste, what are you accepting for institutional waste? Because I think that's a huge concern that I read throughout the letters. So what exactly is that institutional waste you're accepting?
The institutional waste would be, I would say, something that comes out of like a college or a school or those kind of institutions, you can see that. The commercial waste that we collect is not unlike the bendants in the back of this hall. It's not unlike the bendants back of the restaurants. You know, these are the type of services that we provide, not only here in the local area, all around the regions, we provide those services.
Follow up, Counselor Fowles.
So there is talk to the medical waste issue part of it, or will you be accepting that? And what type of medical waste will you be accepting?
We will not be accepting medical waste.
I'll follow that up with a question as well. I have a question around materials that are currently being received at the landfill there in coronation, specified risk materials coming out of slaughter plants. And then the question was raised around how that might impact Neale County livestock producers and whether that type of material would be expected to be in this site.
So the specified risk materials is, is something we do expect in coronation, is actually a separate application and is not with main class two landfills, a separate federal. And we would maintain that certification in coronation. We will not be seen from that here. So the SRM material is not going to be coming to this site.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors who have questions at this point in time? Deputy Reeve Whitstone?
Counselor Cunningham. No, it's me, yeah. So I heard you earlier mentioning with road use, because that's a huge concern for our residents, that you would enforce that, that that would be Waste Connections responsibility, I think if I'm understanding correctly. I just wonder if you could elaborate on that. We, we employ three-piece officers in Neale County. Unfortunately, due to few circumstances, we have a hard time keeping three. So we don't really have, I don't think, the ability to enforce a lot of road use there. So just wondering what your company does in that area.
Yeah, this again is one of those, we, we want to make sure we are having all of our contractors to come to site, follow the route. And we can come up with different systems. I know in one of our sites, it's kind of a, it's a system where we actually have to verify, I think the technology nowadays with geocoding and the tracking of vehicles, it's quite easy for us to track if they stay on the road or not. And that would be one of our ways to make sure that our contractors do stay on the road. And if they don't follow that, then we can certainly enforce our own restrictions on those individuals. Yeah, the punch card system would be one of those items where you could manage that way. Again, there's different ways to consider the enforcement, but really, I think it comes down to those contractors that come to site will follow the regulations that they lay out. Again, I do have an example of that. And how ends that working relationship? When the neighbors do have a concern, it's the two-way communication that we want to encourage. And if they see something, say something, we'll, we'll absolutely enforce it. But I think when we're upgrading the road and also agreeing to a road use agreement with the county, it is our intent to have a comprehensive compliance with that.
Okay, again, I'm going to ask any further questions? And Counselor Fowles?
Another common theme, accumulated waste attracts pests which can transmute diseases causing further contamination. What do you have in place to mitigate this problem?
If it's already in a bring our environmental consultant?
Please introduce yourself and then go ahead. I'm an NCP Marshall. I'm with the Land Target Consulting, and we are an environmental consultant, Waste Connections on this project. I would demand, counsel, if I could have you repeat that question for me?
Just if you would be very close to the microphone when you're responding, please just verify that to hear.
Accumulated waste attracts pests which can transmute diseases causing further contamination. What do you have in place to mitigate this problem?
Yeah, the management of pests in landfills is, is one of those aspects that is routinely managed through operational practices. This is one of many aspects of the provincial permitting scheme. The, the standards for landfills in Alberta is the, is the, basically the rulebook for the province to, to manage these facilities. As part of that requirement, Waste Connections would need to submit and have authorized an operations plan which would specifically address those issues.
I think just I'm going to do some follow-up first. And one of the concerns we heard lots about is, of course, rodents, scavenger birds, seagulls, the potential for things like avian flu and transmission to other facilities. We've heard a lot around just the idea that the materials that come in and the scavengers and other opportunistic creatures don't necessarily stay on site. So there's a big concern that there would be potential for contamination moving off-site. And so that, that's been repeated over and over and over and over in the materials that we receive. So I think that's well worth addressing here today.
So on the operational side, I'll talk to how we manage our operations. So when you're looking at the source of where the birds are going to be attracted to, it's typically the material that does get disposed of in the facility. So operating practices, like what Pete was mentioning here, is very critical. So even though our landfill is going to be a 20 acre size on initial development, each day when we're operating our site, there is a requirement to have daily cover. So daily cover of any material that comes in is part of the standards for landfills, well written, well understood, and it's a practice we do daily. So in order to make sure that we manage that effectively, we typically have our site operations like a 50 foot by 50 foot kind of open face of the landfill. And as you're operating the site, you want to make sure that all of that material that comes in gets managed properly. There's dozers, there's compaction equipment. It's actively being worked and managed as soon as the material comes in. So having that type of controls of managing your product as soon as it comes in, as well as daily cover, is one of the aspects you do on the operational side. The other aspect is an investment, an investment that private companies like us will make. When it comes to looking at the goals, which is typically what we're seeing, I think goals following the grain sieners, you'll see them out there. So they're, they're out there. What you're trying to do is minimize the goals that do come to your operation. The way you do that is you invest in your program called Predator Bird Services, a company that actually manages the program. We have them at the open house. We have them, they're available. The program is about a $20,000 a month investment that you do. It's a significant investment, and we do that. So then when you're looking and trying to mitigate the practice of those scavenger birds coming, it's really being preventative so they don't come to the site. It's really what you're doing. So operationally, you don't attract the food source by managing it properly. It's the one aspect. The second aspect is preventing. So before they even come to the site, we actually have a program with the falcons and a program called Predator Bird Services. We do have a link on our website, the project website, all the information about the company's there and the program. And we also had them at the open house as well. So that is a couple of the key features when you're talking about that. When you talk about emerging things like avian flu, these are aspects that are external that we would all want to make sure we're managing. It's not a site-specific item. I think I mentioned that in my presentation. Avian flu is serious for any operation. It's no different than Drumheller regional waste where your garbage goes down. It would be equally as concerning for that site or any landfill in the province. I would say the Minister of Ag, Municipal Affairs, there's a lot of people, including the Minister of Environment, they would all want to make sure that it's managed properly, including us. So we want to be aware of that. And I'd say the local operations want to be aware of that. We're calling it out as an absolute thing that we need to make sure we understand and manage, and we will be participating in that process. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Are there other questions? Counselor Grisby?
Yes, this, this is Dylan. On my farm, we've had three major weather events of heavy, heavy rain. The one site, we exposed 200 yards of pipeline that was a year old where it actually buried that pipeline. It moved soil away up to about a mile. We were fortunate that it stayed on our property. I'm concerned about your buffer zones for severe and heavy rain because it happens in our area. I've had it happen three times where I've had to move soil back.
Through the chair. Surface water management is one of those critical features of landfill design and operation that is very specifically regulated by the province. As part of this, of the work that we would do towards the approval application with the province, we would have to demonstrate that we have understood local conditions, which would include exactly the kinds of rainfall events that you're talking about. And we would have to demonstrate that the surface water management structures are adequate both by design and good by the way they are proposed to be operated, to respond properly to those conditions. So that is both the physical management of the quantity of water and the rates, again, specifically including the kinds of storm events that you get in this, this particular area. And it also speak, will need to speak to the ability to control those liquids, both in terms of flow rates at town discharge to protect downstream lands and downstream infrastructure, and surface water quality to protect the interests of downstream surface water users. So will surface, surface water and groundwater key issues addressed specifically through, by the province through the standards of landfills, standards for landfills, that would have to be specifically addressed by scientific and engineering studies in support of the application that Waste Connections would make to the province of Alberta.
Okay, thank you. Question, Counselor Cunningham.
More just clarification on my part. I know in the literature that you folks set out to us, one of the benefits of the project was diversification and stabilization of property tax. And it stated a stable and diversified tax base keeps residential property taxes lower as these alternatives incur a greater proportion of overall tax payments. I've had this conversation in regards to other developments that were proposed in Neale County. I don't think as a council or myself, I can never guarantee every person their taxes are going to go down. If I had to show my hands right now how many people's taxes went down in the last 10 years, I don't think there'd be a whole bunch. So I just want to make sure that people are aware, just if this project happens to report, it isn't guaranteed that your taxes are going to be reduced, just to clarify that.
So that's more of a comment than a question. And so Counselor Fowles, you got a question?
When you were building your site in coronation, could you tell me the province how often they came out to make sure that you were following the regulations?
I personally don't know the answer to that question. I can give you the, what, what the standard is and what it tells you, but I, I don't know the answer to that question on coronation. What I can tell you is what the standards say and the preference is.
And through the chair, I'm, we're not involved with the coronation facility, so I can't speak specifically to your question, Counselor Fowles. But what I can tell you is that there is very strict documentation required. So we, as an independent company, are very often retained to provide engineering services that include the strict documenting of all of the measures that are taken to build environmentally sensitive structures. That would be the landfill liners, the drainage systems, all the things that are required to contribute to environmental performance. And so companies like ours then provide extremely detailed records to the province of Alberta. And very often, the way that works is that our clients, the landfill owners, are not allowed to use, for example, a new landfill cell until the province has reviewed that documentation and specifically authorized it. So as independent folks would be required to attach our engineering stamps to conclude that, or to confirm that, that we are satisfied that the requirements have been adequately met. And that is then provided to, to the province, and the province then reviews all that documentation and then come back to us if they have any questions. And certainly in my experience, it is not uncommon for Alberta Environment to come and look at the work during construction. From my perspective as a consultant, I would encourage that. We have absolutely nothing to hide. We're proud of the work that we do as independents and engineers. And so to that extent, I think there is a very full disclosure of the quality of the construction and engineering work that is done to, to the experienced folks in the province.
Just before I give the microphone back to Counselor Fowles, I'm just going to follow up a little bit on that. In numerous conversations, I've heard, I'm going to say a high level of skepticism around provincial approvals and the guidelines that are required, and huge concerns around water and groundwater contamination, and a fair degree of skepticism around the engineering and design of liners and containment of leachate and those types of things. And so I think it would be probably worthwhile to just maybe address that in the presentation this morning. I know it was addressed in the overview, but I think that it's probably important that it is a, it is a problem and it is a major concern. And as you read through the numerous presentations and materials that we've received, that's definitely a concern to our residents. So if you would address that, please. So if you would address that, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I can speak with some confidence to the way that the groundwater environment is protecting the province of Alberta. For full disclosure, if you look at the Standards for Landfills in Alberta, the provincial document, in the introductory pages, you will see my name there. I was part of a team that worked with the province to develop those standards. So that was a multi-party team of private independent consultants such as myself. It included representatives from municipalities, representatives from companies such as Waste Connections, in addition to the subject matter experts at Alberta Environment. And our intent during those discussions was to produce a practical, but made in Alberta, standard that would bring the best and most appropriate containment requirements to this province. And it's my view to a large extent anyway that that's what we did. I wouldn't say that any of us at that table got everything that we wanted. But the outcome was that we ended up with an approach here in Alberta which is at least as strict, as if not stricter than almost any jurisdiction in North America. The reason that I say that is because it's founded on three principles, three different layers of protection to groundwater, if you will. Starting at the bottom, the requirement here in Alberta is for thick natural clay materials beneath landfills. These are natural geologic materials. And part of the sighting work that Dan referred to in his presentation very much includes looking at areas that have that natural protection. This is uncommon in many jurisdictions in North America where there is more reliance, if you will, on the engineered works. Now, here in Alberta, we're required to have both. So there is an absolutely fixed requirement for natural, tight, low permeability clay conditions beneath new landfill sites. In addition to that, now moving upwards, then there is a requirement for lining, which Dan mentioned in his presentation. The kind of lining that would be used here would combine both thick compacted clay layers, all tightly engineered, this is the kind of engineering I was referring to earlier that needs to be documented, reviewed, and what have you. In addition to that, there would be what would be called a geomembrane and plastic line, which lies directly on top of that engineered clay line. So now we have thick natural geology, thick natural clay geology, protective groundwater. We have engineered compacted clay and geomembrane lining protecting that groundwater. And above that, then we have a continuous drainage blanket for the liquids that can gather at the bottom of the landfill, which in our terminology we would call leachate, but it's just that contaminated liquid that can flow to the bottom. So in contrast to the natural geology and the lining layers, which are intended to protect against the flow of water, the drainage layers are the exact opposite. They are intended to promote the flow of water, and they promote the flow of that contaminated water to collection sumps around the outside of the landfill. So you can imagine that like your bathtub, but the bottom of the landfill is not flat. It's laid into a slope. It directs the liquid to these collection points, kind of like the way where the plug is in your bathroom. And what this allows then is the landfills to be operated with a very small amount of liquid, only a small amount of liquid that accumulates in the bottom of the landfill. The benefit of that is that to the extent that you can have only a small thickness of liquid, there is very little force to drive that liquid out through the lining systems, through the clay, et cetera, et cetera. So there are these three layers, the natural geology, engineered lining systems, and then this leachate head management, as we would call it. And just for calibration, the way the Standards for Landfills works that is that a landfill is run to a target of a foot of leachate, maximum one foot of leachate thickness at the bottom of the landfill. There is an allowance for 14 days after a major rainstorm to draw that liquid back down. But that's the amount of liquid that's allowed, that's the maximum amount of liquid that's allowed. And that wouldn't be just for this facility. This is true for any new facility, any expanding facility in the province of Alberta. So that's the way that groundwater is protected here. In addition, as Dan said, there is then the monitoring system for groundwater which establishes a ring of groundwater monitors on the site. This is an early warning system, and it is specifically on the site. The standards again actually prescribe that the monitors must be relatively close to the waste footprint. You can't put them a mile away. They need to be relatively close to the waste footprint, so if anything is getting out, you'll see it early. But they need to be reasonably far away from the property boundary because there needs to be time and space to deal with anything in the unlikely event that it's there. So now we have natural geologic protection, we have engineered protection, we have leachate collection system as part of the standard, a way that these sites are developed and operated. And then we have groundwater monitoring on the property to provide early warning in the unlikely event that the groundwater is affected. So I hope that's a useful, a quick sketch of the way that the system works at the provincial level.
Very thank you for that. Again, I guess I'm going to ask if there are any further questions, Counselors, or Counselor Folds?
The liners, so when I look at these type of projects, I look at 50 years down the road. What is the length of the time of the lifetime use of one of those liners?
So again, if I could go back to the quick description that I provided, the lining system that would be used here is this composite lining system. Comes simply again that it comprises both a compacted clay layer, which would be probably two feet thick, compacted in separate layers as it's built, and the geomembrane, and overlay by that plastic geomembrane. So the performance of that lining system is genuinely the culmination of both pieces. The standards actually does allow for just clay lining systems, but the modern standard is these composite liners, which give you extremely low flows, so very high protection against leakage. And because of the combination of the geomembrane on the top and the clay layers underneath, then gives you, as far as the clay line is concerned, of course, there, those are geologic materials that would actually be selected material excavated from the site, characterized to be sure that it's got the right properties, and then compacted in accordance with an engineering specification. But those materials are conventional earth materials and are geologic in their nature. There's no time limit on those. The geomembranes, the way that they function is that they provide, they are almost entirely impermeable. It is very difficult to get liquid to go through those layers. And what we know from the published literature is that the flow through those systems will occur, where there are minor local defects, and the construction literature is really clear. We know actually what the typical size and frequency of an occasional pinprick in the plastic liner is. You know, we're not impractical enough to suggest that that can't happen. And actually, the literature tells us that it can, if we do it correctly, what kind of frequency and size at all we can expect. And it's actually that practical demonstration over many, many years that lets us be confident about how well these systems can actually work. So it's not just theoretic. We're not the first people to be suggesting the use of either compacted clay or geomembrane liners. This composite lining system is the standard generally that is applied across North America for these kinds of facilities. Again, I would say with the added benefit here in Alberta, that quite apart from the engineered liners, that here we have this requirement for natural, thick geology, very low permeability plays, which then provide that, to use Dan's language, that belt and braces kind of approach. So the kinds of flow that we might expect in these terrains, obviously until we do the detailed investigation, I can't be specific about that. But for illustration, I can tell you that on other properties that we work on, that you would be looking at groundwater flow in the region of inches, an inch or inches of flow laterally per year that are the characteristic of those natural conditions. And the engineering is all in addition to those flows. By point being that the level of protection generally for groundwater here in Alberta is extremely high, both due to engineering and due to the required natural characteristics. And there's no time limit on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Question for the applicant. As I've read through the concerns package for the residents, there was some concerns. Stay close, okay? Concerns about traffic. Just wondering, how much of an impact will your traffic have on the provincial network? I know it's not anything to do with Eagle County, but are your trucks already traveling those roads? Or is this going to be a separate diversion, I guess, if we're going with it?
Thank you for the question, Dan. Yes, our, the traffic flow already occurs on Highway 21 down. We're utilizing that road network to go into a coronation site, is what we're doing now. So the intention is actually to take less traffic, to take that traffic off of the Eagle County network that's going through. Actually, it will be just now the same number of vehicles going on as it is today, except now with acceleration, deceleration lanes on Highway 21. We're going to turn 290. So no, not new following traffic.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I am mindful of the time, but I want to give Counselor opportunity to ask questions if they have them. So are there any other questions? Counselor cutting in.
I would say a quick one, and he looks at me kind of slightly. So anyway, just two really quick ones. Was Waste Connections the original builder and owner of the coronation site?
We were not.
We're not, okay. And just one thing, I saw in one of the letters that we received, it was from somebody that was quite close to the property, proposed property. They have not been contacted by you. Community engagement is number one for me. And so can we have assurance from you that you will make sure you contact those people that are close? And could we be provided with a number that our residents can call to ask questions and concerns and maybe have meetings with you going forward?
Yes, we actually have a what we heard report that is attached to our submission today. So you'll see all the activity that we have provided in the packages that we sent out, in our invitations, trifold, brochure that we sent out. We always had a contact name and number, as well as our website, for people to contact us. The one-on-one engagements, we use the process of being invited to people's homes. It wasn't a door knocking exercise. It was more that we wanted to be available for those who wanted to have those conversations with us. In the event that those people did not want to have one-on-one conversations, we wanted to ensure we have a public open house to make available to anybody else. And I can tell you, of the 176 folks that dropped by, I handed out our other cards and wanted to make sure that I was available. But again, I'm making myself available, not pushing myself onto people and just, you know, offering our website, offering the phone number, offering emails in order for them to engage with us.
Okay, Counselor McGee?
Sorry about that. So I have a question around how the land of the entire area is going to be used. You spoke about how the landfill portion is only the 20 acres. I'm interested, this is a two-part question. One, how long would that size last, predictably? And this is, of course, there's going to be variances in that according to how things fall out, of course. So then the second part of that question is the remaining of that land. You have a fair bit of it going into crop. How long do you see some of that crop being? And how much will be there for a substantial length of time this crop?
I'll answer the, Pete's going to answer the progressive development question on how that looks. So, because that is a technical moment. But I will say, because it's 540 acres and the landfill, again, wouldn't be unlikely we already do in coronation and/or our Southern Alberta facility, in over a period of decades, to the maximum of 130 acres was done. We do see that devolving, obviously, over time, and it'll only be a small portion used. And again, I'll get Pete to talk about the progress of capping, development and capping on the site. The farming aspect of this, I think it's important to know that we do have the long-term, we're not farmers, obviously. So we do have those arrangements in place. So for any of the lands that are not required for the project, for the, forever, they will be used as ag lands. That's a perpetuum, so, and that's how that is written. So, you know, again, it's for the use of our project. Whatever lands aren't used, it will be farmed as it is today.
So just before you go on, I just would get to clarify. The question specifically asked about the first 20-acre cell. So if you could give us an idea of the lifetime related to that? And secondly, can you give us an idea of the maximum number of acres that eventually would be contained within the landfill portion? So of the 500 and some acres, what portion of that would eventually be included within the landfill development?
Mr. Chair, let's talk about the initial, that initial cell first. The question was about the 20 acres. So generally, the first development affects the largest amount of area at a single time disturbance. You simply need more space to work when you first open up. So it's, I think it's a reasonable guess from the facilities that we've worked on that that initial cut would be 20 acres. And that then would last, it's a bit of a, how I was pleased to strike this, depends how quickly the waste comes in, it's a question of contracts. But I know that to Dan's point, that the waste footprint is likely, based on their own experience even, over life of the facility, to be, let's say, somewhere between 100 and 150 acres in total. That's just based on what they've actually seen, my experience on other properties that's reasonable. It's a fair question to say, well, how do you get from that 20 acres to the 100 or 150? So the way that works is that while the initial cell, the first disturbance, is that, let's say, 20 acres, that every year or couple of years, then you would extend the landfill cell out. And that's not an additional 20-acre disturbance. It might be a 5-acre disturbance or a 6-acre disturbance, or less even. It just depends again on how quickly the waste is coming in. So the progressive development that I know Dan has spoken about sort of works like this. You make that initial excavation, that initial disturbance, and the materials from that excavation then are put to stockpile. And so this is, so stockpiling then is one of the uses of land that we need as being critical to the development and operation of the facility. It takes space to do this. And so for example, the topsoil, the topsoil, we are, we would be required by Alberta Environment to salvage topsoil for use in final reclamation. We'd also be required to separately segregate and stockpile subsoil, again, for use in reclamation. It's a little different from the old landfills where reclamation was something that you worried about at the end. That's no longer possible. Reclamation is something that has to be done through the operating life of the facility. So we strip off topsoil to stockpile, strip off subsoil to stockpile, and then excavate the clay materials from that 20-acre area. And again, that would go out to stockpile for use both as daily recover, one of those operation lifings that I spoke about at the beginning, managing windpipe availability. paper lidle, managing vectors, that kind of thing. Daily cover, an absolutely essential requirement. And there will also be soil required for final cover, for that final capping layer, for construction of roads, and all manner of uses on the site. So those materials from the initial excavation then go to stockpile. Once this cell is constructed, the engineering work is done, the lining systems that I've talked about, the leachate collection systems. Once all of that is ready, and is signed off by the province, then the placement of waste can begin. So then it's waste and cover, waste and cover, until that developed area is, until that little piece, if you like, is getting full. And then the cell would be extended. There'd be a smaller piece than the original excavation would be excavated. Those materials then go to stockpile as required. And then as the first portions of the site come to their design final lines and grades, they then can be capped. And again, this is a little different than, perhaps, than old landfills, where capture is something that you worry about at the end. The way these modern facilities work is that throughout the life of the facility then, it's an ongoing process of new excavation at the front, if you like, landfilling behind, and then reclamation and capping behind that. And that is done throughout the life of the facility. So again, depending on how quickly the waste comes in, it wouldn't be uncommon for a facility like this to be operational for, let's say, 40 years. And so throughout that 40 years, then, there would be an ongoing process of new cell development, lining, leachate collection, landfilling behind them on top of that, and then capping reclamation behind that. And so by the time you get to the end of the operating life, the majority of the site has long since been reclaimed and capped. And that's just perhaps one of the differences between modern landfilling and the older-fashioned approach to dump sites, where, quite frankly, those kinds of activities were left till the end. Very often at the end, there were no materials left to do that reclamation. That is not uncommon for older landfill facilities in the province. But it's simply not allowed anymore. That's not the way, that's not the way that it's done. Does that help to answer your question?
So I'm doing the math here. If you use the 150 acres total over a 40-year life, you're going to use 3.75 acres per year in your landfill. That's the way the math works. And we're talking 150 acres of total potential landfill site, 40-year life, then potentially be looking at about 3.75 acres that would be opened, capped and covered per year, approximately. It's just rough math. We're trying to get it as an idea of, you know, how fast that moves, and how much land will be being developed and/or capped on a progressive basis over time. So that would provide the answer to that question. So, thank you. Councillor Pedder?
Just in summary to what you said there. So you're telling me that you will not be bringing any soil within 40 years from outside. You'll have enough, the way the process is done south to south, there will be enough ground cover on site. You would not be bringing any soil in?
Yeah, that's actually exactly how we were prepared in these, that we would actually use what we would call earth balance on the site, that we would design the excavation to meet the needs of the project. As I said, there will be a requirement from Alberta Environment for reclamation materials, to be, the topsoil to be salvaged to stockpile, subsoil to be salvaged to stockpile for reclamation use. And then for the remainder of the materials, yeah, the intent is for sure to use the materials that are there. And that then is a question of excavated materials going to stockpile, and then operational materials being drawn from those stockpiles on an ongoing basis throughout the life of the site. To the point about the averaging of the 3.75, you can see that the, you know, we've acknowledged that the first cell needs to be a bigger space than that 3.75, and that then gets caught up towards the end of the facility. And that's true from an earth balance perspective, too. But the end of the operation, yeah, the intent is that the building sufficient materials go aside, and that those materials will have been used. And at the very final, the end of that final capping piece, that earth balance will have been achieved. And that's not special to us. That's the way I would say. Modern landfills are generally designed, operated, capped, and closed.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm well aware of the moving of time, and I don't want councillor necessarily to consume that amount of time. And so I am going to say you need to put forward your final questions, so that the people who have actually come to share their thoughts have opportunity as well. So just a reminder to councillor that there's more than just us here in the room today. And so councillor Coates?
I'll tidy it up with this one last question then. You speak about our MDP and how it visually is going to be affected. So how do you intend to maintain the high standards of visual appearance and integration with the surrounding lands?
The topography of the site is actually quite important, how you manage and certainly build your site. Like, you'll see that in the design aspects. When we get to that, there's a lot of working with the neighbors and working with the folks around us to make sure that there is a clear line of understanding of how our site will get developed over a period of time, and how that looks to the local area. So that's the one aspect of it, is to actually work directly with your neighbors and actually work that out, so they understand and see what that looks like. Landscaping and design, as well as burming, is all part of the process, to make sure we have the proper look and feel of the site that makes sense to the area. It is very much tailored to the local area. So we do work quite a bit on that when it comes to what it looks like, or it feels, how it integrates. Not like our facility in Winnipeg. You know, that was a facility that was an old dairy farm. And it was of interest to the community to see that. We literally use the farm we heard. As we go through, the old house is our office. The barn is the maintenance shop, and our facility's on the other side. So we do make an effort to make sure we understand the local area, what and how it feels, and to make sure we integrate with it.
Thank you for that. Councillor Pedder?
Really quick, because I want to hear from the public. But if this project was to ever get sold, would there be assurance from the new owner that the promises made today would be carried forward on this project to the right ears?
The answer would be yes, absolutely. The commitments that are given here are part of the fabric, of this application, part of the fabric, probably agree with the community. And that is certainly commitment that will be held.
Okay, thank you. I think on behalf of councillor, I will say we're going to draw our questions to a close, so that we can hear from the people who have come today to share their thoughts on this development as well. Prior to doing that, it is now 11:54 according to my clock. So I'm going to say we're going to take a 10-minute recess to allow for some refreshment break. I use non-refreshment, but certainly nature calls. And so at 12:05, I am going to call the first person who's speaking in favor. So we are in recess for approximately 10 minutes.